I have the tank full on this little tiny spare.
Okay, everybody, welcome back. We're in our afternoon session. First action item is an action item. It's facts and conclusions for CP 20-12 Sidney Project Logistics Facility. Nineteen, we get those on there?
Yes, I sent these to you. You have some paper copies. If you would like a copy of that.
Yes, please. Need to figure out how to find stuff faster on this. I got the snowmobile ordinance. Here it is.
Does yours have a search?
Nope, that's for the gathering place.
I sent the legal counsel.
I think it has a search on it.
I did send these to the legal counsel for both the save the South Fork, uh, save South Fork Sam and the Palance, Fred Coriel and Julie Thriller. And I also sent it to Kyle Phan and Deborah Nelson. And I received comments back from Deborah Nelson. And some of her comments I did not incorporate in to the facts and conclusions. I don't know if you saw those. But the conclusions, you know, we, the introduction, we had the applicant, the appellants. We had a number of findings about the, the land categorization of bare grass land being turned into industrial uses. Surrounding land uses are ag and timber. There were other people here at the public hearing that expressed approval and disapproval. Talks about the process of the public hearing due to COVID-19. And then the conclusions, um, I'll swiftly go through those. One, the proposed use is in harmony with general purpose. This is page 207. Of the Valley County ordinances and policies in accordance with tile nine, chapter five of the Valley County Code. The proposed use as conditioned will not be detrimental to the public health, safety and welfare. Three, the application is complete and includes the impact report that addresses relevant factors in Valley County Code 9-5-3D2. Review and approval of engineering is typically done after the change in land use approval. The proposed use is consistent with the Valley County Comprehensive Plan. And specifically went through a number of roles here, A through I. Five, Valley County is one which do use own performance based planning, which allows different uses adjacent to each other. Six, applicant will mitigate impacts to housing affordability by providing higher wage jobs. And by constructing improvements to area power infrastructure that help reduce the cost of power infrastructure for residential development. The applicant will also enter into an agreement with the Board of County Commissioners to mitigate impacts to community housing. Seven, the proposed use meets the general dimensional standards and site improvement set forth. In tile nine, chapter five of the code, including but not limited to lot area setbacks, landscaping, fencing and utilities. Eight, the proposed use meets the specific standards for live industrial uses under Valley County Code 9-5F-2. Including minimum lot area, frontage minimum setback, building high support area, building lot coverage and parking. Nine, there will be little visual impact. Advocate will mitigate visual impacts with hope with building setbacks. And landscapes running from Warm Lake Road. Dark sky lighting with light sensors and building material in colors that blend with the natural surroundings. Ten, there's little concern of chemical spills at this site since most chemicals will go directly to either the mine site or disposal site. Side night briquettes only leaves the trucks at the mine site. There is a chain of custody handling for hazardous materials. Advocate will mitigate impacts from hazardous materials by transporting materials in US Department of Transportation certified containers. By trained transporters, by storing fuel in above ground storage containers with secondary containment. By maintaining a spill prevention control and countermeasure plan, by complying with county and state fire building codes. And by complying with federal and state laws regarding hazardous materials. Eleven, well ads have been delineated and will be protected using adequate BMPs for water management practices. This use shall not go into city or urban area. It would negatively impact circulation in the city. This use should not go on the Patriot River National City Byway. This use will be, will be an improvement to the corridor management plan of Idaho Power by relocating the substation to the site. This application is for this specific use, not the entire mining operation. The application is timely. Idaho statute allows parallel applications. There have been other conditional use permit issues for this mining endeavor. The commission completed the category rating and determined it was a positive 17. Relocating the logistics facility at this site will help mitigate impacts of traffic to the overall traffic corridor. Consistent with the traffic impact study, applicant will mitigate impacts of traffic. By constructing improvements at Warm Lake State Highway 55 intersection. And by contributing to improvements of the Dineheart State Highway 55 and Boyston State Highway 55 intersections. The applicant will also collaborate with the Valley County Board of Commissioners on a road development agreement for maintenance of haul routes. Proposed use will not adversely affect adjacent land uses. The land uses adjacent to this site, specific project. Is seasonal livestock grazing, which will be able to continue as it did before the logistics facility was constructed. Twenty-one, will be no long-term impact due to the abandonment of facilities since a reclamation bond will be in place. Twenty-two, the other impacts to county services and service providers. Will be identified and mitigated in a collaborative effort so as not to place an unreasonable burden on the public infrastructure. As allowed in Valley County Code 9-5H-7B. The economic impact will be tremendous. Jobs will be good jobs so that Valley County does not have facility, rely solely on service jobs. The appellant failed to meet its burden to clearly state how the decision of planning and zoning commission was not consistent with the preponderance of the evidence. Presented in accordance with Valley County Code 9-5H-8C. The board is the final decision maker on a conditional use permit that is appealed. Valley County Code 9-5H-12V7 allows the board to obtain additional information from the administrator or staff. The applicant, the appellant or the public. There were a number of ways for the public to participate in the meeting include in written testimony, telephonic testimony and testimony in person. The meeting was broadcast live. Open meeting laws were not violated. And then the order and then the conditions of approval, all of which I had gone through previously, except I did make some changes. Unless you want me to read each one of those.
No, I just had a couple of questions on back though. Like on number nineteen, the road development agreement of the haul roads. With this, this is for the logistics facility. If we get to the mine application, is that a separate road development agreement with the mine? Are we going to do this all in one road development agreement?
Okay, which, are you talking about the conclusion?
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Yes, that talks about off-site road impacts. And it says the applicant will also collaborate with the Board of County Commissioners on a road development agreement for maintenance of haul routes. That's outside of this site.
So we're, we're going to do one master road development agreement for all of it?
Yes.
But in order to do that, they had, they had to have that done first before they can get the permit to build this?
Yes.
Okay, that's my concern.
Yes. Condition of approval seventeen. Shall enter into an agreement with the Board of County Commissioners and Idaho Consultation Department. To mitigate impacts to the road system, including maintenance of Warm Lake Road prior to any site grading or improvements. Except placement of a sign and timber or fuel removal for fire protection. So before they can even start work on the site, any site grading, landscaping, anything like that, except for the placement of a sign. Or
They have to have this done.
They have to have an agreement with you.
And they're working with Jeff now? Do you know on some of that?
They've met a couple of times. I was part of those discussions.
Nothing really serious though?
No, unless something's changed that I wasn't aware of.
That's why I think we need Caleb Linky to come talk to us also and be, just start engaging with ITD.
The other question I had is under twenty-one on the facts of your conclusions. Since we're make, a reclamation bond will be in place, do we set the value of that bond? And if so, is that just the cost of what it costs them to build the logistics facility? If it was a $5 million facility, then we ask for a $5 million bond?
No.
How do we determine that?
It's almost a crystal ball experience because we don't know. If you look at condition of approval number eighteen. After reclamation of the mine site and the facility is no longer needed by Midas as a logistics facility. A new conditional use permit will be required prior to use by any other entity. If there is no further use of the site after a two-year timeframe, the structures will be removed and the site reclaimed. A reclamation bond will be required. That reclamation bond would be for a reclamation of the site. So they would have to get a permit to take down the buildings. They would have to get rid of all the materials associated with that and reseed the property.
Have you also thought about putting something near that Midas can't rent that facility out to someone else after they've abandoned the mine?
They would, well, they can. A new, a new conditional use permit will be required.
So they could sell it or rent it to someone else, but they would have to get a condition.
It would require a conditional use permit.
So that reclamation bond though has to be put into place prior to all of this.
Yes.
So we do have to put some type of a price tag on it. So
I don't know how to do that.
Well, I, hopefully with the help of the insurance company, we would be able to determine how much it's going to cost to take down this type of a facility.
You're talking about digging up the pavement, the parking lots, all that?
Yeah, we'll have them put forth what they think it's going to take to reclaim it. And then we'll look at it and see if it's a reasonable amount. I mean, typically those reclamation bonds, I think, come in, you know, large, you know, $50,000, $100,000. You know, it's just a bond.
I just remember when they toured the mill down here and they came in and the guy bid it for a little over a million too. To tear out the mill, all the buildings, all the contaminated soil, all that stuff is a million too.
That's going to be a lot different than this facility because that was a, you know, seventy year project where there were no DEQ or environmental standards taken into consideration.
I'm just trying to guess what that bond is going to be like.
I, I could see, you know, probably a couple hundred thousand. I would think a little more than that, but we'll have them projected. I mean, they'll put together a bond. There will be engineers that would look at.
They'll, we'll let them come up with that number.
Right.
So to speak, okay.
It's, it's the same as, you know, the road development agreement is going to be a discussion. It's going to be an agreement.
Now, the other question I had for you is, I like your idea of involving ITD on the Warm Lake Road reclamation bond. How far is that a state highway? Is that clear to Warm Lake?
No. Warm Lake Road is a federal highway under the auspices of Valley County. Valley County is responsible for the day maintenance.
That's clear to landlord?
Warm Lake, it's, it's, I know that Warm Lake Road is a federal highway. Idaho Transportation Department is only responsible for State Highway 55. If State Highway 55 was rerouted someplace, then that would be part of it. But I can see this collaboration, road development agreement being a conversation with ITD on those improvements at each of those intersections. An agreement with them. And then the rest of it would be between Midas and
Valley County.
So Idaho Transportation Department won't be deciding on things outside of their jurisdiction.
Okay.
But it's going to be a three-way discussion and agreement.
So I'm
Lot of discussion between ITD and the city of McCall on the Dinehard interchange.
But I'm thinking, okay, let's just take worst case example that Warm Lake Summit gets destroyed because of the heavy logging trucks. We've got to go back in and grind that pavement and reset it with concrete and then repave it. You're looking at a thirty-five, forty million dollar reclamation bond, correct?
To build those into a legal document with them. That if they don't have a bond in place or an agreement in place. Then they will have to pay for those improvements directly.
Well, I don't want it to go that direction. I would rather have that, that bond up front. We can tap into. They, they can't say, well, we'll fix it and then it gets halfway fixed and then they're gone. And we get stuck with a bad road. I want that money deposited where we both have to sign off to get it out. That we can use to fix that road if they just decide to pull out and wait.
And that will be part of the road development agreement.
Okay. I think that's going to be a very big number.
Yeah, it will be a bond though. It won't be the money in the bank, right?
Well, you have to put 10% down on a reclamation bond. I know like in my gravel pit, I spend $200 a year for a $200,000 bond. Is that right? And I don't know if it's 200,000 or 20,000.
There will, there's performance bonds. There, I mean, there are the different types of bonds.
But you, every year you have to renew that bond. And to me, I always thought it was 10%. So if it's a million dollars, it'd be a hundred thousand dollars a year cost to keep a million dollar bond. Does that make sense? Anybody else know?
So I used to do them all the time with forest timber sales where the forest service would require that a time certificate deposit be set up. And it was the forest service that actually had access to remove those funds. So there are ways to do that so that we are guaranteed. And then once everything was done and mitigated, then the forest service would withdraw and get the funds back. So we did that in the banking world.
So was that 10% of the bond they had to put in?
I don't honestly know. There was, the forest service gave us a letter saying, we need this much money from this guy. And we're the only ones that can withdraw those funds. So I would assume that we would be under the same kind of a stipulation. And I, I'm with thinking that, you know, I mean, they probably have a bonding company. We can probably work with their bonding company. But do we have someone that we work with? Doug, do I have a bonding company or does ICrimp have any of that kind of information or?
I don't recall.
Okay, we'll have to look into that with our insurance.
The only thing that I'm, I can refer to is the bond that we had for the jail. When Valley County did a, a major on the ballot to approve the bond for the jail. And that's my only experience.
That's a different kind of bond.
Different kind of bond.
Municipal bond, I think is what they call that.
But we should be able to work with bonding company or an insurance company in order to determine some of these expenses and
But you know, that might be something you could look into. If Idaho First is interested in it or
I will look into that.
I don't know how to approach that, but
An engineer will be part of this discussion. There are other, there's other types of financial surety agreements like escrow agreements. I mean, so you're going to have to look at the one that's right for this because it's not going to just be a long-term reclamation type of bond. It's going to be a yearly
Maintenance and
Yes.
Reclamation, right?
Yes. Maintenance. Yeah. I mean, so who's going to plow it? Who's, I mean, this is going to be an agreement. If it gets to this certain level of wear on, on the, the surface. Then who's going to make those improvements? Because I'm not sure the Valley County is getting a whole bunch of direct revenue from it.
The only revenue we're going to get is from any building that's built through permit fees and then they're going on our tax roll.
You might just make them do all the maintenance on it. But that could be
But I want something at the end in case coal prices drop or the world comes to an end and they just walk away and leave. And we've got a road that's totally destroyed.
But you're going to make sure they take care of it every year.
It's just a two-part, yeah, we're talking about two different parts of the same thing. I just have to have the long-term and the annual.
Yes, the annual maintenance of it. They need to keep that up.
And I think we need to be involved with that with Jeff and with ITD and with them and sit down here and hash that out.
And that's what this is. That's what this says. There will be that road development agreement in place.
Now, the other thing that is not in here.
You guys had me at that last time.
Right. The other issue is the, we're not in, and we're, we're charging impact fees yet, but can we talk to them about the increase in trash volume and the increase in deputies required and the increase in school buses that the schools need or whatever that is?
Number twenty-one. Number twenty-one. Shall enter into an agreement with the Board of County Commissioners to mitigate impacts to other county services.
Okay.
Service providers and infrastructure such as EMS, sheriff, solid waste, et cetera.
So I think what's going to happen is if this gets approved by the forest service, things are going to move, really start moving really fast after that.
Spend the next nine to 12 months talking with them.
Yeah.
And they need to come with you with their idea. I mean, this, you guys shouldn't be creating all of this. You guys at least be make them do the work and then I know that Jeff's been in communication, I see that Kyle, I think it's
Yeah.
Top end. Yeah, I think that there's been a lot of communication going back and forth right now, but we need to be a part of that conversation also.
You said you've kind of been to some of those. What?
I've been, I think, one call and then one meeting with
What's the feeling? Is it
It was initial. I mean, it was just super preliminary, like what are we going to do? We, we, you know, I think the last one that I was part of was discussing like the winter issues around Warm Lake Road. Because, you know, they're talking about gate that they want, or excuse me, they want to keep that road open, but they didn't want to have a manned gate or a facility there where they keep the public out. They say, hey, you plow it, the public will
How are you going to stop them?
Right, well, you think of your snowmobile program also. Yeah, so all of that, I know the conversations on come down with past.
So Larry, where are we on the groom bypass there? Is that pretty solid?
Yeah, it's, it's very solid.
And it's taken off where is it?
I talked to Jake about it. He actually gave us permission this year, this winter to go ahead and take a groomer up there. Track it and see how we feel about it because a couple of spots we've got to make a decision on quite where we're going to be at. Uh, and we've already decided pretty much our path on Johnson Creek out, back out to Landmark. That was I think we're in pretty good shape, but I think the conversations are going to be, the controversial conversations is going to be what happens on, right there at Warm Lake. You know, I, I personally don't think there should be trucks hauling snowmobile trailers up to Landmark, but there's other people that
That, that's part of, that's part of a, oh, that's, yeah, this is the conclusion of the public hearings. That'll be part of the discussion.
Yes. Doing it hurt ourselves.
Okay, any more questions on this? Not identified in motion to approve the facts and conclusions.
Um, I would say that Carol did not have time to read and she was fine with that. And the comments received back from the only other person that commented, wanted all of these things. That was the attorney for Midas wanted it all tied into the logistics facility, all of those agreements. Um, but I think it was pretty clear in your discussion and decision at the last meeting that it was for the entire project, the road development agreement, the service provider agreement and the housing type of agreement. Just for the record, because it's our only opportunity to speak with them about all this, so yes. Okay, just
And this permit is based on the assumption that they, they get the permits that they need to invest?
Yes.
So I mean
And you can enter into all those agreements and when that, if
That's what I'm saying though, is that none of this really matters unless that goes through.
All right, I move to approve the facts and conclusions of CP 20-12 Sidney Logistics Facility.
I'm taking that.
I'm moving in second and I'm just hoping not forgetting something else here. All in the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I think that you're pretty well covered in all of those sub-arrangements we're going to have. And I'll hand this to clerk for signature.
So much detail. Good job. Okay, what are we doing next here? Oh, the pickleball group. Welcome back.
Larry, you sent us something this morning, is that right?
Yeah, I changed, Carol asked me. She was afraid the county would be responsible for grading. And so I just added on, I removed a couple of words and, and put in, uh, Valley County Pickleball Committee will be responsible for all costs associated with site grading. And scheduling with contractor of their choosing. That way for sure it's all on them. That was the only thing you wanted me to change.
Hey, any more questions for?
So one of the whereas is up there. Tybo, Valley County has an estimated 300 pickleball players with no A dedicated public location to play pickleball. Did that A come out?
Which one was that?
Dedicated, well, in the whereas is page one, third one up from the bottom. With no dedicated public locations to play pickleball, that doesn't make sense.
No A dedicated. The A should probably come out of there.
And then which line did Carol have you change?
Line Um, on the second page, fourth down. Talks about grading work. We just changed it so that the pickleball group is responsible for all grading, choosing the contractor and scheduling. And then for our la, our, the last time we discussed it, so we also added in, um, about discussing with the road department before they ever, before they have any special events and need extra parking and that's added in there too. We did that before, a couple of weeks ago.
Last word choosing is missing an O. Choosing, C-H-O-O-S-I-N-G, and that last thing. We have, we don't have any county letterhead up here, do we? Does this need to be on county letterhead? I mean, I can make changes.
Oh, there should be.
I was going to make changes for you and then just
Who can do that for me? I usually, I used to give it to the girls and the clerk to do it for me.
If you email it to our office, we can, um, if you email the modifications to our office, Commissioner Mop, and then we can print it on the letterhead.
Let me do it really quick then. I haven't had a chance to read it and apologize from since this morning, so I'm
Not much has changed. Oh, I just got, there is not T-H-E-R-E, it's T-H-E-I-R.
In that sentence that was added regarding the, uh, uh, costs for site grading and scheduling with the contractor of their choosing.
Yep. Good catch.
Well, what a dropout I am.
Hey, we all have our strong suits and our weaknesses, you know?
I'm working on it, my friend. I'm working on it.
Here's another one that you might want to add too. The agreement will be enforced for 30 years and renewed annually. This agreement can be revoked at any time by either party. Then the change would be the need for overflow parking must be communicated to Valley County Road Department before any special event. In the case this agreement is terminated, all improved structures that belong to Valley County Pickleball. You don't have that in there?
All improved structures belong to?
Structures that belong to. Does that make sense?
I have one way or the other for me on that.
That belong to, or you could say belonging to.
I've added to.
Belonging to, I kind of like that.
Just a little thing.
And I created a separate line and fixed some things there. Thank you.
So Hope, you're good with all this?
Yeah, I'm Evelyn.
Oh, you're Evelyn.
I'm the Valley County Pickleball Club and then this is Colleen. Hope's on a trip right now.
Nice. Thank you.
Pickleball world tour?
Pickleball world tour.
Would it surprise you any? She's in Arizona enjoying a hundred degree heat.
Playing pickleball. Hey, so I would, let's see, this is an action item. So I would take a motion to approve this MOU pending the grammatical changes.
I will make motion that, uh, pending change, pending the approved changes that we approve the MOU for pickleball court at Lake Forest.
Moving in second. Any more discussion? We're all good? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Soon as we get a friend about and back to us, we'll get a sign and get you back.
Do you guys have any info on like how many other areas actually have dedicated pickleball courts? I mean, I've seen them used at, you know, tennis courts all over the place or people playing pickleball at tennis courts.
They're, in fact, they're, one of the companies, the contractors that we contacted, um, says that he, he's just building all pickleball courts now. He's built fourteen parks in Boise and his, the sport's just going crazy.
Awesome. Yeah, the Olympics.
Doug, should I send that to Amanda? And is she busy with?
And is she busy with elections?
They probably are, but if you can send it to Amanda and just request that it be printed off on letterhead.
So Chairman, you want me to make, make these changes and then just send it to the clerk's office?
I just made them.
Oh, you made it straight.
If actually, we have time, if you can email it to me, I'll just go down and print it up myself.
Good, then I'm out.
Yeah, we got 15 minutes till our next agenda item, so thank you both for coming in.
Thank you.
Looking forward to going up and watching.
Watch more than watch.
Well, I could try, I might stop having smoke now and then, but I could try.
I'm gonna get you out there on the court. Thank you.
These are just like Hope.
I know, this one, we're all in the community together.
As soon as Doug's got it done, I'm sure he'll send me a copy and I'll send it over to you.
Yeah, we'll be, uh, in Cindy's office for 10 minutes. Or you can email it. Thanks so much.
The group, huh?
It's awesome, man, good job.
It's kind, it was, it's fun, it's nice to meet all those good people and different, a little different. So much energy.
Thank you, Sheriff. You bet.
Oh, sirens going by out there.
Yeah, there are, got some big.
It's the third one, I think.
I don't know how Midas can even use Worm Lake, so that that road is so steep. That would be scary in the middle of heavy trucks.
There's gonna be, as I say, there's gonna be people trying to get their snowmobiles up there, there's gonna be people trying to go up there and ski. You're gonna have people trying to ride fat bikes up there, you're gonna have people like just walking up there, and there's gonna be a lot. That top two corners, it's steep and it's very, very sharp turns.
I held 11 horses up there one time in the truck, and I ran out of gears, had to stop, pull over, let her cool down before I could go any further, it's too steep.
So Doug sent out this impact code.
Yeah, I just saw that, I haven't read it, though.
So the biggest thing is gonna be upfront, development impact fees will be based on actual system improvement costs or reasonable estimates of such costs. So we're gonna have to estimate the impacts to the roads, the impacts to the, you know, fire. I mean, it's gonna be a large conversation before we do this, and that's why.
Like if somebody buys this 100 acres up here, this state land, and they want to build a condominium complex, there's none of sewer or water, it's gonna take $5 million to do that, they'll have to pay that upfront. I mean, that's the way I look at that.
Yeah. Agreed. Uh, or working with the city in some kind of.
Well, yeah, with the city, but I mean, that's what this comes down to.
So in the past, what I've seen is developer pays for the match for a DEQ grant to do an upgrade, so they don't pay the entire costs. They just work with the city.
That's awesome, too, but that's our tax dollars. But how do you go in and figure out the damage on the highway?
Exactly, yeah.
That road there, I mean, that could be 50 million bucks if you destroy it all.
Well, and the thing is, is it's per building, so.
Yeah, how do you do that?
That each house has so much, you know, but like.
So I was gonna say, that's the part that I can't quite comprehend, is how do you break that down into a number that each user pays?
So let me see if I can find cunas, because I did the research on it.
I know that, I've seen it for houses, like in a subdivision. I've seen impact fees for a house, because that's pretty easy to figure out, but for Midas Gold and a mine site that has 300 to 500 workers, and I don't know how you figure it for that big of a deal.
Yeah, and, but we're not asking for impact fee there, I mean, there, I guess there would be, we could ask for an impact fee.
If we had them now, we could certainly ask for this logistics facility.
Absolutely.
Because if there's, is there, well, I guess there's gonna be families living out there, but it's gonna bring more families in.
No, that's the thing, is like depending, depending what you see, so I've heard 130 families, I've heard 400 additional residents. And I think the number that was in the DEIS is like 400 and some odd new residents to Valley County. So if that's, you know, one, four people per household, you're still talking 100 new homes or 100 homes that we don't have and the infrastructure to go with them.
And I just find it very arrogant to say, well, we're just gonna pay everybody 65,000 so they can, I know, outcompete everybody else. That's not the answer to me.
No.
I've already told them that.
So I don't know. Are we on camera? Because this, yeah, we need to probably discuss all of this in an actual open meeting, or I probably did discuss it, but.
There's a lot to think about.
So impact fees as far as the fire departments, I mean, I think we need to sit down and look at our true impacts because it not only impacts the fire department if we're gonna do it, we need to look at roads. Um, parks can also be an impact fee, I mean, you know, there's a lot of impact fees out there, so we gotta really figure out what, how do you figure what that impact is? Um, I thought I still had what cunas were. Okay, so cunas impact fees, ooh, they're expensive. The Ada County Highway District charges $3,143 for every building permit. Cuna Parks is 939, Cuna Police is $90, Cuna Rural Fire is 825, or 824 dollars. Commercial impact fees are.
Per resident?
Per resident. That's why, you know, I thought it's five or $6,000, and that's, um, that's what we were seeing in Middleton with all the highway districts out there prior to leaving out there. Commercial impact fees are by the square footage of the new developments. And Ann Westcott from Galena Consulting did our last impact fee analysis. So yep, she must be the one coming, because she was, had been working with the Cascade Fire Department. And again, that goes back to, I mean, you start tacking $6,000 onto a building permit and you're trying to get local housing, that's a big difference, so.
Hey, Juan.
Hello.
Happy belated. Did you eat something amazing?
No, we're on route.
Ah, bah.
Cleaning up.
It was your 50th, wasn't it? It's a big one.
Is it?
You're supposed to celebrate those.
Oh. I missed out.
Yep. I was gonna go celebrate my 60th, and they closed the restaurant, it's like two days people. It was rude.
Have you heard anything from the governor's office? What he's announcing at 3:00?
He won't tell me, but I'm assuming it's more of the same.
You think so? Just keep going.
Thousand cases in one day, I think so.
Doug, six minute, so in this impact meeting.
I don't know. Maybe you did.
Thank you, sir.
If there's anything specific you want to highlight, we can have Commissioner on, we'll submit this time. Start working on that.
House fire right now, we hear.
That's what's going on.
How far away? We're on, we're on Cascade.
Hopefully everybody's okay, oh, yeah, you can see this.
Hello, Senator? No, this is for the pickleball club. Pickleball club? Yeah.
Pickleball's coming to Valley County.
It's already here.
For us old guys.
We're setting us up for the, uh, the world championship.
It wasn't Donley.
Yeah, it's in Lake Forest.
You see that house fires over on West Mountain or right here?
That's off West Mountain Road on, uh, Roberts Loop.
And we probably didn't clean your chimney.
I'm gonna go back through my emails, I got some emails on here.
Yeah, it's amazing, keeping up with deleting your emails and your old voice stuff on your phone. And if you don't do it, pretty soon it's impossible.
Like an hour.
Are you ready, boss?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're gonna move on down to our agenda, our next act, item is an action item. We're going to convene as the Valley County EMS district and work on a contract with the Donley Rural Fire Protection District for EMS services. So this time I'll convene as the EMS district. You sent that to us, I believe.
So Juan, do we do it separately for each district, or we're doing, so each district has their own agreement? Can we just put it all on one and have all of you sign it?
About a little bit different, that's just the way we've always done it.
Yep. We'll do one for Cascade next week.
Are the contracts different? I mean, it's, soon, there's portions of each of the contracts that are different.
They're primarily the same, because all it associates with is the one ambulance 24/7 that's got at least an advanced in it. So that's intermediate 85, um, just below paramedic, and then, um, the cost that we agreed upon. There might be some wording differences between each of us, but they're pretty much the same premise.
Pretty much, kind of an annual thing. So at this time, I would entertain a motion unless someone else has questions.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract with Donley Rural Fire Protection District for EMS service.
Moving in second, any more discussion? All three sign this, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Juan, can you tell us, because I can't tell by their writing who your commissioners are? Anybody I know?
Jim Daniel. Um, Clint Swain.
Okay.
Melissa Mainy.
Melissa Main?
Mainy. Fourth grade teacher, Dolly Elementary. And their husband's retired soccer coach.
Oh, retired, yeah. He sent you an email that came out, um, on the ongoing training. Is that anything that you guys take, or is that, would that be hopeful?
No, we take it quite a bit on the healthcare side, and we've had a few panels that we are participating in at state level. All the agencies are doing that.
Juan, have you guys reached a point yet or talked about when you transport somebody from their home to bring all those with them? Those medicines with them to the hospital?
So there, I don't, I can't say or bait them with that protocol, yes, but there's some issues with transporting of, uh, medications, because, um, opioid users tend to put the EMS folks in harm's way and say that pills are missing or that, because they'll count the pills there. And if they're, they use, it usually comes on our plan, so there's a protocol we have to follow that each of us have on how we handle their medicines.
So.
Some of them we leave, because we just don't wanna mess with them, because they'll end up, by the time we get over there, that we're the reason they don't have them, and then they'll get more. We have those marked.
Okay, I guess that's it.
Can I get a copy of that, or you wanna?
Can I email it to you?
Sure.
We'll laser fish it in, uh, just for record management, and then I'll make sure that we email you a copy, chief.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, stay safe.
Thank you.
You know what, chief, I can actually, I think we have a few minutes, I can.
You got 10 minutes.
Make a copy for you right now.
You're getting your steps in.
So Juan, when are you gonna return? How many more years you got?
Seven.
Seven more.
I hope to be here longer as the EM. See how that goes.
Well, if you run for commissioner, you won't be able to be the EM, will you?
I don't think so.
Who's, who's zone do you live in?
It'll be your zone, because I'm moving back to the west side.
Fine.
In seven years, you're gonna go, okay, I'm done.
That's great. That's perfect timing.
Yep, there's more things in life than this job. This job eats up a lot of you.
I would do either or, EM or be commissioner. EM is easier.
It's a little less politically charged. That's for sure.
I'll be a little more mindful what I say. Thanks, sir.
Pat's always reminding me of that. You have to be a little more mindful of what you say. That's okay. I need that.
Try to keep newspaper in quotes.
Yeah, yeah, give him something to write about.
I was going to ask you, so is there anything in our HR policy where if somebody joins a board at the director level or below, that they have to have approval from their direct supervisor before joining outside work?
It's a state law that you can't join something that is for the benefit of where it's a conflict between the county and the board that you own.
What about a conflict of time? I mean, who approves their time release? Because all that stuff happens during, on, on the job.
Oh, it can, it can. I mean, I'm part of the show, the director's show. I have been for the last three years, but, you know, I'm pretty mindful of not, um, to take too much time. I did a lot of my work on Friday. But that's me, you know, and I have the assignment.
Curious, I've always in the past, if you have an outside engagement, I don't care if it's work or I don't care anything that is going to take time away from your job, you have to have your direct supervisor. I was just cur- curious if we'd ever addressed that or if there was something that matters.
No, I don't know that it's actually been much of a problem. I guess as long as it's their job, then most of our directors are, um, consent anyway. So as long as they are leaving the requirement of such a position, then it's not a problem, you know? Then it hasn't, that's not, um, one of the issues that we've had in the past on the network. That would be maybe a topic for coaching. And that's part of it.
For coaching, is that what you said?
If they are not getting their responsibilities done for the position that they hold, then we definitely don't want them joining anything else.
Okay.
Until they get their work done.
I have copies, if you're getting copies, I think I have.
You have?
Yeah. I have four copies of the.
You're getting used to us. We're doing.
It's me again.
Um, I have four copies of the coaching form and I've got three of the, the past ones, cause I don't really need one next. So.
I can pull up the password on my computer, but.
Yeah.
To be able, I'm not good about pre-printing.
It's all good.
You're getting to know us pretty well, Pat.
Well, you know, I hate printing copies unless I have to because I don't want to shut trees.
Sure.
But, you know, we set the expectation that I'm printing copies over and over time.
I was kinda hoping it'd go that way eventually.
Without having to ask, he's just gonna read our minds.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. I was just gonna say, all you have to do is ask. There's this little thing called communication.
Yeah. If I can stick to my phone and my iPad, I can handle the technology, but anything else is like. I got in trouble the other day. I put in an ink cartridge in our printer and I couldn't get the damn thing to work. I don't know what's going on. And she went out and, well, you have to see this little piece of tape down here. You have to hold this off. Nobody told me that.
Brett is just so anti-anything right now with computers. And I'll walk in there and he goes, just fix it.
Just fix it. That's right. There's a really good one on, I don't know if it's Prime or YouTube about, it's called Social Dilemma. It's about all the technology and what it's done to our kids. Our family values and family life and it's now all the, the, the big IT companies, none of them allow their kids to even have a phone.
Yeah, I think that's why.
And I'm thinking, hmm, that says something there.
Yeah.
I don't care where you go, everybody's on the phone.
Well, and so many, I mean, what, what they've shown is the kids that are, are now coming up into the workplace, they'll be sitting in the same room and texting back and forth. Well, how is that helping in your interpersonal skills? Being able to communicate back and forth. People that are dating are doing that, sitting next to each other, talking.
Who cracks me up is the, is the person down at Costco or Fred Meyer that's, well, I can get this over here at this store for this price. And it's like, oh my gosh. Makes people honest, I guess, but. You gotta drive all the way over there. You're gonna spend ten dollars to save a buck thirty. I mean.
Well, do you guys getting anything on the central district health board from the schools? There's a rumor going around that McCall Donley High is preparing to hold back fifty percent of all students this year.
No, all we do is re-rate the schools. They come up with their own plans. And in fact, I just got one, this, maybe last night or this morning. Elmore schools are going to go, going to the red category. All of Elmore County is exploding right now, and so they're gonna go to the red category. They've been in yellow, kinda like we are here, Cascade and.
So does that mean they'll be ball online?
It's up to that school board.
I know it is.
They can go half and half. They could go full online. They can, whatever they wanna do. And if people blame that on us, it's like, no, we don't make those recommendations. We did just do them for all the assisted living nursing homes down in Boise. There's ninety-nine of them in Boise now, facilities. And if you have the virus in your facility, you can't let anybody in. But if you're a clean facility, no coronavirus, everybody's good, then here's the parameters so that your family could come in and see great grandma or grandma, whatever the case may be. And we've set, you know, it's behind glass and, you know, no physical contact and, oh. People still don't like that, but, you know, those people need the mental support of their families to come in. Some of those have been without any visitors since March.
That's horrible. And it's hard.
And of course, all of those down there, it's almost always the staff that brings in the virus. It's not the people living there, cause they're not going to you.
They have to get it somewhere, right? He's at, um, they're doing the hybrid school where it's mornings he has twelve and the afternoon he has ten students. And they have to sanitize between class and it doesn't matter. And, um, they did, the trouble with Mount Holmes, frustrating him, is there were a couple of cases with kids in the cabinet that he knew of in a pastor, but they, they don't share anything. So.
When they need to be sharing that information.
They do. They're horrible. And so for his part, he doesn't trust, you know, what is going on.
And what's really scary right now is a lot of those folks in that part of the state come to Boise for hospitalization. Eastern Idaho, now they're shipping them to Salt Lake and in northern Idaho, Spokane, Cordeau, they're going to Seattle. But those, so that's a long ways across the state of Washington to get to a hospital. Somebody that can take care of you and it's like, wow. So far in Boise, we've been doing pretty good. So far. And the herd immunity is gonna get here a lot quicker.
But there is no such thing because you don't, you're not immune long-term with this.
Nope.
And that's, that's kind of been a little.
There was a story of a gal that had it for seven months.
Yeah.
She had both lungs collapsed and all kinds of issues with it.
You just don't wanna get it, that's for sure.
So is Skip coming in?
Yeah, he's supposed to.
So you wanna wait before we go into executive until he gets here?
Oh, we should. He should be here in a minute now, I think.
There he is. So welcome, Skip. Have a seat. But this time we're gonna, you can come in here. Yeah, you can close the door. That'd be great. Need a motion to go in the executive session for article two oh six one B.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for article ten four dash two oh six one B.
Move to second by roll call. Esprick eye, Doug, we're in right at two o'clock. Welcome, Skip. You're in such big trouble. I don't know.